Good evening, everyone. It is now six o'clock. The Rockdale County Board of Education work session is called to order. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move to Heather.
And can I keep it?
A motion has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We will now recognize visitors. Are there any visitors tonight that would like to speak to the board? All right, well, welcome. We're glad you're here. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's cabinet updates. Dr. Oats, please introduce your cabinet.
Certainly.
Update for me, please.
Certainly, Chairwoman Brown. Thank you. Mike Mariello, our distinguished director of professional learning, and I see he has his team with him, will be coming forth to share some information and updates on professional learning from teaching and learning.
Well, good evening. Going to ask my PL teammates to pass out pad folios. Little gift with some professional learning information in there for you. Well, good evening Superintendent Oats, Board Chairwoman Brown, Board Vice Chairwoman Duncan, esteemed members of the board and guests. I am excited tonight to provide an update from the Office of Professional Learning. So I'd like to start off tonight introducing my team. This is our district professional learning team. And from left to right, we have Ms. Carlotta Meriwether, who is our professional learning data specialist, Jamika Hawke, who's our administrative assistant and bookkeeper, Ursula Maddox-Davis, who's our coordinator of teacher effectiveness, and I am the proud Director of Professional Learning, Mike Mariello. And so I do have two of my teammates, Ms. Hawke and Ms. Ursula here with us tonight. And so I do want to take just a minute to let you know, I've been in the district for a long time and had a lot of roles and served with a lot of teams. And this is the hardest working team I've ever worked with. So my hat's off to these ladies and it's an honor to work with them. Okay, so tonight, what I would like to do is to talk a little bit about the process of professional learning and how we determine what professional learning is offered in the district. I'll give you an update on the professional learning sessions that have taken place from the summer on through right now. And also talk a little bit about how we measure the impact of professional learning. So we'll jump right into it. Everything starts with our district strategic plan for continuous improvement and our RCPS strategic priorities. On our strategic plan, we are in the teaching and learning department. So we focus primarily on that second bucket, the student learning achievement and growth. But the great thing about professional learning is we get to work with everybody. And so one day we can be working with teachers, the next day with leaders, and then the next day we could be doing a training with buildings and grounds. So that's something we really enjoy to be able to serve all of our departments in the district. Of course, our RCPS strategic priorities that Dr. Oats implemented when he came to the district and they've stayed consistent. We support all of those and align our professional learning to the strategic priorities. And that's the common understanding of the Georgia Standards of Excellence and informative instructional practices, the implementation and maintenance of a balanced system of assessment, the delivery of effective standards-based and standards-aligned instruction, the integration of appropriate digital resources to enhance student learning, and the implementation and maintenance of a viable multi-tiered system of support. So we are part, as I mentioned, of the teaching and learning department. And we are continuously looking at data reflecting, making adjustments, of course, throughout the year that directs our professional learning. But one thing that we do in teaching and learning is each spring we come together for a formal retreat. And we do that in late April, early May. And that time is for us to really come together as a group. We reflect on the progress with the priorities and the strategic plan to see where we're at, how things are going, what we need to tweak, and what we need to make a priority for the upcoming school year. We analyze our data as that's coming in. We begin looking at that clip, the consolidated plan, our needs assessment and goals for the district. So we begin putting that together. And we also do some professional learning. And so this last year, we did professional learning on universal design for learning for adult learners. And what that is, is we worked as a team as how do we get better at training adults? We don't always think about adults learn a little differently than students. And so we work on strategies for how do you engage adults best? And then we also partnered with the International Center for Leadership to do a training on creating a culture to support effective instruction around rigor, relevance, and learner engagement. And with that work with the ICLE, we came up with some instructional priorities. We looked at our data and we focused out as a TNL group of well, what should our instructional priorities be going into this school year? Our assistant superintendents came to that session and they found it impactful. And so a month later, they had that same session with all of the principals. And our assistant superintendents and principals, they looked at the data as well and said, well, what should our instructional priorities be going into this school year? And you can see we have some common things there with the first one being tier one instruction. And that's that general instruction that all students receive in the classroom. We know we have to strengthen that. We have to continue to give the very best instruction day to day in our classrooms. We also have professional learning communities. We all know that our professional learning communities need to be strengthened. And that's our teams of teachers, grade levels, departments, that they come together each week and they look at data. They learn together. They look at student achievement and forming lessons. And we know that as we get better at that process, that grows student achievement. So that also was a common priority for us. A couple others that we identified were collective teacher efficacy, which is the belief of teachers and their ability to positively affect students. We have to believe we can do the work. It all starts there. Dr. Oats talks about that frequently. And then also the safety nets and supports. And that we're talking about safety nets that have before school, after school, and during school. As you know, we have a lot of remedial classes during the school day as well. So we looked at those priorities and we settled on these three main buckets for our 2023-24 instructional priorities. So we have tier one instruction, collective teacher efficacy, and professional learning communities, and safety nets and supports. And so you can see in each of those areas, we selected some things that were going to be our immediate focus. And that being lesson planning, focus walks. And we've already started the focus walk process. And that's our teaching and learning department partnering with the schools. We go out and visit classrooms and provide the schools with feedback. We were at Shell Creek Elementary School, had a great visit there today. Our balance system of assessment, continuing to work on that. Our literacy pathways and teaching endorsements. And I'll talk a little bit more about our endorsements later in the presentation. A data analysis protocol really tied to our PLCs. We know our PLCs look at data, but we have to give them protocols and steps for how do we do that? And it needs to be consistent from school to school. And we need to make sure that time's effective. We have lots of data, but we need to make sure our teachers are using it effectively to improve student achievement. And then our coaching model, which I will talk about later in the presentation. But our coaching model is our instructional coaches and our technology coaches and all of those supports we have. We have to continue to build their ability to support our teachers. And then lastly, our safety nets and supports and working on all of those. But one in particular is our early intervention program. And that's our services for our K-5 students that are at risk for not being on grade level in reading or math. And so we did all that work. And again, partnering with the International Center for Leadership and Education. And we're really excited about this partnership. We have a training plan and our consultants, Dr. Robert Thornell, he was here yesterday, as you can see there, September 13th. We had our first training with our school and district leaders. It was a very impactful day. And it's really all around creating a learning culture. How do we create a common language of rigor, relevance, and learning engagement? And so that's works being done with our principals, our assistant principals, directors, coordinators. And also, we're going to do that work with all of our coaches to make sure that we're all on the same page. We're all able to go into classrooms and give effective feedback to our teachers so we have rigorous learning environments. So we're excited about that work that's taking place and where that's headed. Now, Dr. Thornell will also come later in the semester and he'll be visiting our school campuses with our principals and assistant superintendents, and he will be visiting classrooms as well. So we're excited. And I should mention that he is a former principal at elementary, middle school level, a curriculum director and a deputy superintendent. So he is very experienced with his work and we're happy to partner with him. As we move into the spring, our summer, many of you were able to stop by or attend part of our leadership summit. Our leadership summit is a great event to end the school year, but it's not just a celebration of the school year. One of the main purposes is that we're kicking off the next school year. And so that's why all this work takes place with our teaching and learning retreat and looking at our, creating our instructional priorities, our district initiatives. Because when we come to that leadership summit, we're giving our principals and their teams the information they need so they can prepare over the summer to be ready at the beginning of the school year. And so that's what that's really about. Of course, this year we had keynotes from Dr. Oats and Jordan Toma. We had our district initiative sessions. We had choice sessions where our leaders got to choose which sessions they were going to. And that was our leaders, teaching our leaders. And then we had team time where our schools got to spend some time with their teams of teacher leaders, creating those plans for the next school year. And so the fantastic Michelle Kim has put together a video from our leadership summit. And I would like to play that for you at this time. And again, I want to thank Michelle Kim for putting that together. She's part of our leadership summit committee. So we have about 25 leaders in the district that work on this event. We've already started planning for next year. So we're really excited about continuing that tradition. So as we move into the summer, we have lots of trainings and things going on. And one of the things that we have done for the second year in a row is we have new leader orientation. And that time is for our new leaders that are new to the district and our leaders that are going into a new leadership position to come together. They learn from our chiefs, our directors, they learn the Rockdale way. They also do some fun team building and bonding. So that was a great day of learning on July 10th. One thing that we have to do is we have to do a lot of training in the summer. We have to train the trainers. Because as before the teachers and leaders come back, we need our crew to be ready to go. And Ms. Davis is the best in the business. She works with our lead mentors and our new teacher orientation proctors. You can see her up there spending a day at our lead mentor retreat and then working with all the teachers, getting them ready for NTO. So that takes place before we even get to new teacher orientation. And then as we rolled into new teacher orientation this year, we had four days of training for our teachers. We had a full day of technology training. We had a day that we trained on our learning management system, Canvas, the new system, and on creating a positive learning environment. Also, a half day with our curriculum instruction coordinators, where teachers got to go with the coordinator for the department or grade level they were teaching and learn about our curriculum resources. Tier one instructional strategies, as I mentioned earlier, that's one of our priorities. And we started the year off giving them some strategies for their toolboxes. On the last day, we had a vendor showcase. We had sessions on the cycle for results and teacher clarity. And then they went back the second half of the day at their school, their homeschool, and they had professional learning there with their principal and assistant principals. I do want to note that our learning support teachers, they received additional two days of NTO. So they had six days because there was a lot of procedural things that they also needed to train on. And then something new that we're doing this year that we've never done before, it's in our strategic plan, is we're offering additional NTO sessions throughout the school year. So what we recognized through our strategic plan was we're having more and more teachers being hired after the start of the school year, as all districts are experiencing that. And so we, on October 17th and 18th, we're going to have two-day NTO. It's our first one. We have 37 teachers signed up that have been hired since the start of the school year. And we're excited about that because there's a lot of key information that they're getting when they're hired at their schools, but they're missing some of this. And so this will give us a chance to, you know, get them up to speed and love on them and welcome to our district. As we're doing new teacher orientation, we have our administrator startup. This year it was at Rockdale Career Academy. And that's a great day for our leaders to come back to get, you know, kicked off and ready for the school year. This year, we had a welcome from, a welcome message from our board chairwoman. We had a beginning of the year message from Dr. Oats. And then our cabinet chiefs each provided an overview of key policies and procedures. We had training from our teaching and learning department, our technology department, student support services department. We had a legal update from our general counsel, Santana Flanagan. And then we also did some evaluation training. So those are always two great days to welcome everybody back and get ready for our teachers. Something that we did for the first time this school year that was a pretty awesome event actually is on July 21st and 24th, we had training for our substitutes. And we had over 100 substitutes went to General Ray Davis Middle School and they participated in de-escalation training with our learning support coaches and our prevention intervention specialists. And what's fantastic about this, it's always fantastic when you can get the substitutes in for training. But this was a partnership between several departments. And that's how a lot of professional learning works. So Student Support Services and Human Resources, they called me and they said, hey, we have a training that we want to make happen, but we don't know how to make this happen. And of course, since we do trainings all the time, we put our heads together and we created a plan and a registration process for this to happen. And then I went to Keith Hall in Business Services and said, we need some funding because we have to pay these substitutes for coming in. And so we were able to make that happen and we're going to continue doing this. We were even talking earlier this week about providing some more training maybe on that November 7th, teacher work day for our subs that weren't able to participate. Also, a new thing that we did this year is cultural sensitivity training. We've started that process during pre-planning. We trained three schools with cultural sensitivity, training focused on unpacking our identities and how they impact our experiences and work with children. And it looked at cultural relevant pedagogy. We have two schools that are signed up to do this training on November 7th, on that teacher work day. And then we'll continue to add more schools until we are able to provide that training to all of our schools. So during pre-planning, we have a full day of professional learning for all of our teachers. We had an elementary day on the 26th and a secondary day on the 27th. Over 150 sessions offered on those days. We had four 90-minute sessions throughout the day for our teachers. You can see there, we had content-specific sessions, teacher clarity and success criteria, balanced assessment strategies, tier one instructional strategies, technology. We had training for our counselors, media specialists. We tried to cover everybody during that time. And that's always a great way to get our teachers before the school year starts to make sure we're giving them that key information and training that they need. Another special thing we did during pre-planning was we had a training on how learning works with John Almerod. And so each school, each administration team came to the training and they were able to bring a team of teachers. So they brought a team of seven or eight teachers with them to the training. And this training focused on connecting the work we've been doing with teacher clarity with the science of learning. Now, John Almerod is a key lead consultant for the work with teacher clarity, success criteria, professional learning communities. Actually, we've been trying to get him here for three years. And Andrea Pritchett, our former director of curriculum, she helped seal the deal and get him here. And we were so excited to have him. He is also the keynote speaker last year and again this year at the GACES Conference, which is the Georgia Association of Curriculum Instructional Supervisors. So he is a well-saw-after presenter. You can always tell it's a great training when there's pictures at the end of the training with the school and the presenter. And they all want to come up and get their picture with them. He's fantastic and I'm really excited to report that. He had such a good time and he felt like our teachers and administrators were so engaged. Cleared his calendar and he's coming back for our first day of the leadership summit this year. So we're really excited to continue to work with him. When we rolled into September, first day of school was August 1st. First Independent Learning, Professional Learning Day was September 1st. So a month in, we had a whole nother day of professional learning. This day, we had even more sessions, over 175 sessions offered. You can see the list of things that we had there offered to our teachers. And also working on developing assessment-capable, visible learners, which is in our strategic plan. And that is where our students, our teachers, work with our students to set goals and take ownership of their learning and student-led conferences. So that's a big piece in our strategic plan that we're just beginning this year. So how the professional, how it works for these days, as I say, we have over 175 sessions. Well, it's not just professional learning. We organize it and we work with all of the coordinators in teaching and learning and learning support. And we put together these sessions based on the teacher's needs. And then I send, we create a website and we send that to the principals and assistant principals a week before. So they can view it, they can guide their teachers to the sessions they want them to take. And then we give it out to our teachers to register. So our teachers, they get some guidance from the administration, but they also have opportunity for some choice, which we know is very important as well for them so they can meet their individual needs. And here's just an example on that September 1st day of our math courses. So we had 26 different math sessions going on on September 1st. And you can see all different grade levels. It's not generic, it's specific to the needs for those grade levels and those teachers. And, you know, we wouldn't be able to do this without these professional learning days. So these are really powerful days. And I pulled math because we know math is a big priority for us. And milestones data showing that we have a lot of growth needed in that area. We also know we have new math standards. But I could pull a list like this for all of our content areas. So also, we've done training with our paraprofessionals. Now, we only get them a half day during pre-planning because they are not scheduled to work all week during pre-planning. But we were able to do some work with them around supporting reading instruction, supporting writing instruction and technology training. And then we had them again on September 1st, where we continued that training, but we added in supporting classroom management and conflict resolution and de-escalation strategies. And there in the bullets, I listed just some of the training we've done with our parapros over the last year. And what's really important to note about our parapros is I've been in this department eight years. Ms. Davis and I have been at this for eight years now. And when we started, we didn't have independent learning days. And you could not train paraprofessionals because paraprofessionals do not have planning periods. They don't work on teacher workdays typically. And they need support. They're supporting our students and our teachers. And so these days are really key for getting them training that they need. As I mentioned earlier, we have our teaching certificate endorsements. And this year, we are offering six PSC-approved endorsements. You can see there the gifted endorsement, reading endorsement, online teaching, dyslexia, teacher leader, and coaching endorsement. These are college-level courses. Teachers take them. They typically take almost the full school year to take this. And when they complete the course and pass the course, they get the endorsement added on their teaching certificate. If they do this on their own, it typically costs them anywhere from $1,200 to $1,500 for the course. They pay $30 for a registration fee for the course for us. So we're able to help support them. And of course, that helps us as it's building that knowledge, that content knowledge of our teachers. And I'm proud to say that last year, we had 148 teachers complete an endorsement course. So that's really awesome. Okay, moving into probably our favorite part, I don't know if that's okay to say, but our part we're the most passionate about is that day-to-day work we do in professional learning. When you think of professional learning, you think about the big trainings, the events, the leadership summit. But there's a lot of day-to-day job embedded professional learning that we support. And I really think this is the secret sauce in the district because these are the people that are boots on the ground, that are making an impact with our teachers and our leaders. And so I want to talk about a few of them quickly. The Rockdale Educational Academy for Leadership, our REAL Academy, our RCPS collaborative coaching model, and our teacher induction program. So I want to start with our REAL Academy. I'm sure you've all heard about our REAL Academy and we're very proud of it. This year is our sixth cohort, our sixth year since we started the REAL Academy. In that time, we've had 66 graduates. And so that's fantastic. But what's even better about that, 57 of those 66, 85% have gotten some sort of promotion either to an assistant principal, a principal, could be administrative assistant, a department chair, instructional coach. But they're wanting to grow in their leadership journey and this program is helping prepare them for that. So it's something we're really proud of. In fact, we've had 24 assistant principals come out of the REAL Academy and we've had seven principals or directors. Also in the REAL Academy, we do, we have mentoring for our new assistant principals. We have mentoring for our principals. We have executive coaches that work with our new principals. We do training and crucial conversations. All of our school and district leaders in our district go through crucial conversations. It's a two-day course. And our new administrators are new to the district. They're doing it next week on the 19th and 21st. And so it's a fantastic course to help prepare them and give them tools for difficult conversations that we know we're all going to have when you're in a leadership role. We do the TEACs and LEACs credentialing. And that's for our evaluation of teachers and our evaluation of leaders. And we've done time management training. Something new that we've added that we're doing this year that was in our strategic plan, we're adding some training around the area of employee recognition and employee appreciation. And so we've had 47 leaders that have completed the five languages of appreciation in the workplace training. And that's really exciting. The best thing about that is many of them have went back and already implemented some of this in their schools. And they've sent us pictures and emails. And so that's very exciting. And we're also have 21 leaders that are participating in leadership book study, Unreasonable Hospitality: The Remarkable Power of Giving People More Than They Expect. Mentioned this earlier, our collaborative coaching model. This is something that started, we've had coaches for a long time, but we didn't have a system to train coaches and to bring coaches together to make sure that they were trained properly and that they were all on the same page. In 2017, we started the RCPS collaborative coaching model. And this is our T-PAC model, where our technology coaches, our content coaches, and our curriculum coaches, and our school-based academic coaches. and our curriculum coaches and our school-based academic coaches, they come together and they meet about fifteen times a year for a full day of training and collaboration. And we can help make sure that we're all on the same page, that we're all working together. We're helping each other grow. And this has grown so much since two thousand seventeen, it's something that we're extremely proud of. Like I said, it's the secret sauce to our district. If we could do anything, I had a magic wand, it would be to add more coaches in our building to support these teachers. Because we know we have more and more teachers that are new to the profession and that need support. We have a fantastic group of coaches. So you can see on there, you can see an example of one of our school-based coaches, who's now an assistant principal, a content coach and a technology coach. Now, last year in our strategic plan, we did have to modify the collaborative coaching plan to increase teacher effectiveness. And so we jumped right on this because we were already working with coaches. But some of the things that we focused on were all of our coaches in the district, and there's fifty-nine of them. They completed the coaching endorsement last year. And Ms. Davis and I did it with them. And the reason we did that, some of them already had some training, but we wanted to have that common understanding of coaching. And it's around student-centered coaching. And this year, we have five or six new coaches and they're in the coaching endorsement. And so we're going to continue to do that to make sure that we have that common understanding of what coaching looks like, what a coaching cycle looks like and how we support teachers. So we did that, we started check-in meetings. Ms. Davis and I started meeting with the coaches. Our coaches report to their schools, they're evaluated by their principal. But what we realized was that there was some coaching pieces that they were missing and they needed some extra support. So they have bi-weekly meetings and we started this last year with myself and Ms. Davis. And they would meet with us either in a small group or individually and they would get some, we would coach the coaches and we would listen to what was going on and the obstacles they were having and we would provide them support. And that's continued this year. This year, we have been able to add three lead coaches. So we are providing a supplement like you would for a department chair, for an elementary lead coach, a middle school lead coach and a high school lead coach. And they're working closely with Ms. Davis to provide those supports to our coaches. So we're very proud of that. We have, you see on there, we have a time management tool. Well, we knew we needed to start tracking coaches. Where are our coaches spending their time? And how can we collect data on them? And so we piloted a program last year, it didn't meet our needs. So we got with the fantastic Michael Rosen and he's created us a tracking tool that we have began using this year. And that's to track the number of coaching cycles and the different things our coaches are working on with teachers. So as we better understand the needs of the work, then we can do a better job training them. Also, we provided training for our school administrators. And you see on the bottom there, one thing we still have to work on is establishing a system of coaching placement to ensure all schools have supports based on school needs. And really, the key to that one is we have schools that have an instructional coach because they already, they always had an instructional coach. Or we have some schools that have two instructional coaches because they always had two instructional coaches. But we have to do a better job of looking at the needs of our schools because we know each year it's different. One year, a school may have five new teachers and one year, a school may have fifteen new teachers. And those teachers are coming in with different levels of experience. And we have to make sure as a district that we have the right support, enough support there to support those schools. So that's something that we will be forming a committee and working on more this school year. Our teacher induction program, Mrs. Davis heads up our program. This is our teachers that are zero to three years experience. We have two hundred and one teachers, probably grown a couple since we pulled this data. In that range, we have about eleven hundred teachers in our district. And so about two hundred of them fall in that zero to three years of experience. Sixty-five of them are brand-new teachers. This is their first-time teaching. And so there's a level of support that's needed for them. That one thing Mrs. Davis and her team have done is they have formalized our teacher induction processes. And you'll see in your pad folio, a handbook there that Mr. Tucker, one of our lead mentors, is holding up in the picture. And that has a lot of our processes. And I'm really, I wanted to include that so you would have a copy of it. I'm really proud of the work that Ms. Davis has led with those lead mentors. A lot of time and effort has put into capturing all this. And the reason we're formalizing our processes is because teacher induction should look the same from campus to campus. And there should be some common things that are taking place. And so we're, we still have room to grow and work to do, but we're moving in the right direction. So I'm going to finish you up just talking a little bit about how we measure progress, measure the impact of professional learning. Of course, the first thing is we look at student achievement. We're always looking at student achievement, that's where the rubber meets the road, that's the bottom line. And we all know that we still have work to do. We've had some gains in some areas, but we still have a lot of work to do. And that's always going to be the top thing that we look at to measure how we're doing. Also, professional learning feedback surveys, we're always collecting feedback. And that helps us guide professional learning and adjust it. And also, we share that with our presenters so they can continue to grow and make sure that they're providing effective feedback for our teachers and leaders. I've mentioned our focus walks that have already started. These are key because as we're in the schools, we're coming back, we're debriefing and we get to make some adjustments. We'll make adjustments next week when we talk, based on the schools we visited this week. It lets us get a really good picture of what's going on in the schools. And so then we adjust our professional learning plan for the upcoming PL day and for the job embedded things that are going on in the schools with our coaches. Individual check-in meetings, again, I mentioned our school coaches are the boots-on-the-ground. So just having that time to listen to them, to know what's going on is always very impactful for us to be able to, you know, gauge where we need to adjust professional learning and to measure how we're doing. Teacher and leader retention, we know that if teachers and leaders feel supported and they're successful, they stay. The research tells us that. And so we take it very personally. We want our teachers to feel like they have the support they need in this district to be successful. And then finally, the Learning Forward Standards Assessment Inventory. We've done this for about fifteen years now. Learning Forward is the national organization, the only national organization for professional learning. And they set the standards for professional learning. Last year, they revised the standards, so they're all new. The purpose of it is to, the standards are implemented effectively. When we implement them effectively, they lead to improved educator practices, which leads to improved student achievement. And so the three main areas are rigorous content, transformational processes and conditions for success. There's eleven standards, as you can see there. I had the honor of serving, representing our district on the panel, the revision panel. There are seventy-two questions on the inventory. We typically take it in March, but it wasn't ready last year, so we had to do it the last week of school, which isn't the best, but we had a lot of teachers take it and we got some feedback. And so we get a report for the district, but each of our school gets an individual report for their school. And as you can see, there's seventy-two questions. We look at all the way from our very best to our, you know, to our scores where we need the most growth. And just to point out a couple of things here. We have, teachers in my school have the technology resources they need to access and engage in professional learning. I know our Director of Technology is happy to see that one scored very highly. And the scale is one to five. So one being these never, these things never happened in my school, a five being these things always happen in my school. Our goal is to get it to a four. That means that these things are happening frequently in my school. And fours make me happy. So, but you can also see other areas in there. I think that that second one, Dr. Oates will be happy to see. My school expects teachers to engage in the continuous improvement cycle. And we're always talking about continuous improvement. And then that last one down there, professional learning, I experienced at my school is relevant to my work. And that one makes me happy as a professional learning director because when we started this work eight years ago, that score wasn't very high for that one. And so we try very hard to make sure we're offering choice and relevant professional learning. Now, again, if you look at your highest, you got to look at your lowest and there's always room for growth. And just a couple here to point out. That last one, teachers in my school are involved with tracking the use of professional learning resources. Well, that goes to communication. We can do a better job, our schools can do a better job of communicating what the plans are, how we're using our funds. And so that's a charge to our principals. Also, in my school, teachers have opportunities to visit one another's classrooms. We know how important that is to share best practice. And so that should not be that low. We have lots of ways our teachers can visit classrooms. They don't have to do it physically, they can do it through video. And so that's something our principals are working on this year. And then that first one, in my school, we engage in professional learning to better understand how issues of race, socioeconomic status and gender can affect teaching and learning. And we know that, you know, that's an area of growth for us. And that's one of the reasons we're offering the cultural-sensitive trainings this school year. So we got our data this year from it. This is our district data for each standard. It's baseline data because this is a brand-new survey. But it does show us that we're in that sometimes range and we need to move steadily up to that always or frequently range. And so we know that there's area, lots of areas to work on. And we had, as you can see, eight hundred and sixty-eight teachers take this last week of school. And it probably wasn't because they all wanted to take a seventy-two-question survey. It was because our principals care about this data and they want it. So they made sure they took it. And that's something we'll continue to work with our principals. It's a partnership between them. This isn't their data, it's our data. And so we'll continue to work on that to grow those numbers. And then lastly, I just wanted to share dates. We do have another Independent Learning PL day coming up on October twenty-third. We're already gearing up, excited for that. This year, on January fourth, will be a school-based PL day as our teachers come back from the holiday break. And then we'll have a district PL day on January fifth. And then we have several days that are reserved for leadership trainings. And that concludes my presentation, thank you. Do you have any questions? We do a lot of trainings. We didn't even include them all.
I do have a question, if no one else wants to give. But my question is about the focus walks and the classroom observations. I'm just curious, I noticed that your group is small. Are you all doing the focus walks?
That's the teaching and learning department. So that includes curriculum instruction, CTAE, assessment and professional learning. So we have a pretty large group, there's about fifty of us that participate. And then the schools also do. So when we go to a school, like today, we went to Shoal Creek, the principal, the assistant principal, their instructional coach, their technology coach, they all walked in classrooms with us.
Okay, and how often do you do those?
Well, we've started them this month, last month really. And we'll do them all during August and September, a couple at the beginning of October. Then we will come back in January and we'll start that process again. And then in addition this year, we're partnering with the International Center for Leadership and Education. So our consultant, Dr. Thorn Hill, is going to come out and he's going to walk with the principals and assistant superintendents and they're going to do walkthroughs as well.
You all are doing a lot of work, thank you.
We're busy department.
My quick question.
Yes.
I thought you're very vague, data, data collection protocol, what does that look like?
Our, our data protocol?
Yes.
Yeah, so that is our process, it's the steps for looking at data. So our PLCs have always looked at data. And so example, when our teachers come together and their students have taken a common unit assessment, they look at that data and they use that to inform their planning for their students. But we didn't have formal processes in place, so that would look very different from building to building. So our Director of Curriculum, Denise Richardson, that was one of her first charges when she came in. So she put a data protocol that has official steps. And it has time for each of those steps. And what we've done is we've trained our administrators on that during the startup time. We've trained all of our coaches on that because they're in PLCs, the administrators and coaches leading those. And now we're continuing to work with our teachers. So as we go and visit PLCs, the expectation is that this looks very similar from building to building. But more importantly, that it's effective use of their time. And it is, they're not just looking at data, they're using it effectively that will lead to improved student achievement. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to echo your comments. I just want to commend Mike and his team and the professional learning team, which is a subdivision of Teaching and Learning for their tremendous work ethic and their commitment. And what I really appreciate is they've been very committed and dedicated to making sure that the work, the PL that they provide is informed by the needs of our staff. And as you heard from his presentation, we thank first teachers and that's critically important, that's ground zero. But they provide professional learning to certified, classified, all departments. So thanks for your hard work and you're great, thank you, appreciate it. Yes, as you know, Cindy Ball, as she takes the podium, serves many different functions. Chief Communications Officer, Strategy Innovation. But she also is our Public Health Liaison and so she's going to give us an update on relevant public health matters.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, Dr. Oates and our board members. Really, it's a very timely discussion because I really wanted to just talk to you a little bit about where we were with COVID in this school year. And then, you know, certainly we had some big news this week. So it's very timely to talk a little bit about COVID nineteen and where we are. This is not, yeah, is it after this one? Okay, well, I can talk anyways, if we don't have the slides, that's fine. So as you know, last school year, a lot of changes were made with regard to contact tracing, with regard to reporting out. School systems were told, you know, social distancing did not need to be mandated any longer, that we really needed to relax, you know, some of the, some of the measures that we were taking with regard to mitigating COVID nineteen and the spread within school systems. Certainly, you know that masks went optional. The governor said, you know, parents have to have the ability to opt out of mask-wearing. So a lot of changes happened last school year, although we, as a school system, kind of kept a lot of those things, including masks in place, although they had to be optional. You know, parents could opt their children out of that. We were one of the ones that kept, you know, mask-wearing longer than most systems, just really to stop that spread as much as we could. So a lot of changes happened last year that carried over into this year. Contact tracing completely went away. We continued last year to track our numbers. We had COVID trackers in all the schools so that we were keeping kind of a tab on that spread and that transmission within our building. So fast forward to this year and no new measures were put in place. So everything stayed the same for us that was put in place last year. The only difference is really that they said this year, as far as reporting, is we had to report outbreaks. And the way that an outbreak was defined is three or more, say, within one classroom. So three or more that are related. It could even be in a household. We didn't necessarily have to report if it was a household outbreak. They wanted to know like in a classroom, whether there are three or more positive cases or on a basketball team or, you know, on a football team, that kind of thing. And quite honestly, they really didn't do anything with that information because as public health officials, they weren't contact tracing either. So really, what they were trying to do is say, okay, if you have an outbreak, we want to make sure that you have like cleaning protocols in place and that you're doing some of those, you know, things that you have control of, right? You have control of cleaning and you have control of messaging. And one of the things that we started really before open house was that messaging. Stay home when you're sick. And that continues to be the message today. Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to take control?
Thank you. Okay, so again, everything that was in place the last school year remains. You can see, May eleventh, last May, was the end of the Federal COVID-nineteen Public Health Emergency Declaration. And this was really largely due to several factors. One being, you know, the wide availability for testing. Vaccines were available really from infants all the way, you know, through the elderly at that point. And there was also a treatment protocol with Paxlovid available. So the combination of all of that, some may say there's also some herd immunity. But honestly, I don't think that they have scientifically said with these variants that that really is true. So maybe, maybe not with some of the variants of COVID. So what did not change and what has not changed even to this date is that anyone who is confirmed with a positive test, COVID-nineteen test, must isolate themselves for a minimum of five days. And you can return, and this is kind of protocol with really any illness, when you have been fever-free for at least twenty-four hours without the use of medicine. And that's key. If you take Tylenol, your fever goes away, that doesn't count, right? But the key here, and there's a, there's some gray area in this. And this is honestly, at my last Board of Health meeting, there was some discussion around this, that even this ultimately is going to change. You're going to see some of these protocols ultimately change. Because right now, you know, again, the recommendation is at least five days, right? And so your symptoms have to have at least improved. So a lot of that is determined by yourself or by your parent, right? You can come to school when you're well. You don't need to come to school when you're sick. And so there's kind of that gray area in there. When, early on with COVID, if you had a positive test, you know, it was ten days. It was fourteen days. I mean, there were no exceptions. And in here, there's that, well, you come back. But if you don't feel well, stay out six days or seven days or, you know. So that's why they kind of say, you know, eventually some of this is going to change and be like the flu. You get the flu, you come back, when you feel better, your fever is gone. That part is never going to change. You have to be fever free for at least the twenty-four hours without the use of medicine. So that's kind of where we're sitting right now, again, looking for some of that to maybe change a little bit in the future. Again, you can return to the school. And what I tell people, because they say, well, you know, my fever is gone, but I just don't really feel well. Don't come to school, you still don't feel well. Come to school when you're well. I can't determine that for you, you determine that. All right, so back to some of the mitigation measures. And some of these, we really still, we promote them, you know, the hand washing. I mean, that's key with everything. And we started some of this messaging early on because at the start of every school year, for the seventeen years that I've been here, it's something. It's always something. When you bring children and adults back together after they've been apart for so long over the summer and you bring them back together, whether it's the common cold, one year it was H one N one. It could be norovirus, bite your tongue. It could be, you know, whatever it is, strep throat. Things are going to go around when you bring that many people back together. So you start that messaging early. Again, we started it before open house because we didn't want people coming to open house not feeling well, right? And then all of a sudden, you know, things are starting to spread before school even starts. So again, nothing really has changed on the mitigation measures. Self-social distancing when feasible. You know, if, if you feel like in a crowd, you know, you're, you're not comfortable, then, okay. Stand back a little bit, you know, some of this, we all have to take ownership of taking care of ourselves and our family, right? Wearing a mask in high transmission areas, again, that's a personal choice, whether you want to wear a mask in a, in a crowd or not right now. But one of the things that we do have, we do have very robust cleaning protocols. That has not changed. We do have our Clorox three sixty, three sixty systems. And you can ask Mr. Budenstik, every time I hear of an uptick, I'm texting him saying, put the three sixty through this school tonight or put the three sixty through this grade level at this school tonight. And they deploy them, you know, at a minute's notice to, you know, keep those areas as sanitized as possible. I mean, we know we can't, you know, cure all the, the germs that are around, but they do help. And then of course, the ventilation systems that have all been upgraded in all of our schools. So testing, where we're at, really the federal funding for free testing has gone away. But testing is available and it is available, you know, free of charge. One of the things that we did last spring is we got with G and R and Gwyneth Newton, Rockdale Health Department. And they had a surplus of home test kits last spring. And so we tapped into that and we had, I think, over twelve hundred of them delivered and then dispensed those to all of our school clinics. Well, we just did it again a few weeks ago and we, we got a pallet of them. And, and the ones that we just got a few weeks ago actually have a later expiration date. They're a year out. So we put all of those into our clinics and, you know, are able to send those home if we send home a student or even a staff member who is symptomatic and needs a test. So we do have those available to us. And we have right here in Rockdale at our public health department. Outside is a twenty-four hour free kiosk. It is a PCR testing. So you stand right there at the kiosk and swab, do the nasal swab, and you actually put it back in the kiosk and then it's sent off to a lab. And that's free and available twenty-four hours. So, you know, just want to make sure that everybody knows that that's available to us right here in our community as well. Retail outlets now sell home test kits. They're probably around nineteen, twenty dollars, I think. And then certainly our doctors' offices and our urgent care centers are testing for COVID just as they are for strep and flu. But, you know, you should know, your insurance is getting charged for that. Insurance is, is covering that. So then we move to vaccines and here's where the latest and greatest news has come out. I will say that the federal programs are committed right now to providing the vaccines free of charge at this time. Eventually, they will move to like a flu shot or some other insurance covered, you know, vaccine program. Right now, they are still being provided free of charge at the federal level. And, and so is Paxlovid. So they're committed right now to the treatment in the vaccines, but the testing, that federal funding has gone away. So the recommendation is to stay up to date. I'm going to put my little air quotes around up to date because up to date is what changes, right? Up to date used to be the series of vaccine. You had your primary and then you had boosters. So all of that has changed just this week and we'll talk about that in, in just a minute. So the bottom bullet, actually, when I submitted this PowerPoint, the bottom bullet was before Tuesday. So Tuesday's news is really about the new monovalent vaccine that has been approved that will take the place of any of the vaccines that are available currently. So the bivalent vaccines that you've had for your primary series and your boosters, those are all, actually, they can't even give them to you anymore. So what they're calling this one is the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four vaccine. And it's recommended one dose unless you are, you know, in a certain immunosuppressed category where they may recommend more than one. So those should be available as early as, they were saying as early as like tomorrow, but it's going to be probably next week before you really start to see them. You know, at first I thought there was really only a Moderna version, but I think there is a Pfizer version that's coming available as well. So just a couple of other, you know, interesting facts that have kind of come out. We did see a little bit of an uptick in COVID transmission in, in our community and in our schools. I will tell you right now, G and R put out, as of today, we have seen a decrease in Rockdale County in the last two weeks for all age groups. So that's good news. And we've, we've seen that in our schools as well. I'm not getting as many calls and, you know, this is going on or that's going on. Our schools have been great about just keeping me informed of what's happening really in the, you know, in the buildings. The, the primary variants that we're seeing right now continues to be the XBB dot one dot five. It's the most commonly circulated right now with the surge that we've seen. But there are others out there. So it's not the only one that's out there. And supposedly the monovalent, the new monovalent that's been approved also gives you the coverage for these other variants that are out there. And then the only other thing that, that I wanted to mention, the lastly about vaccines, is it is going to be available for everyone six months and older. So again, there, what it boils down to is everyone six months and older are recommended to get at least one of the twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four COVID nineteen vaccine. And again, dependent on the immunosuppression to be up to date. So that is really it for the COVID nineteen update, unless you have any questions. Again, the message is always the same, stay home when you're sick and wash your hands. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Bill, you've got quite a slew of important action items.
Absolutely. Good evening. Madam Chair Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, board members. Dr. Oats, Superintendent. Happy birthday, Dr. Zalfeen Smith Dixon. Glad you're with us. If y'all want to join us tomorrow, we're celebrating her birthday all day, walking through schools. So come join us. She's excited about it. She'll be in the morning, give her time to get ready. So I do have several action items tonight. The first one is the bus grant purchase contract with the A R C G dot. You proved one of these back, I believe it was April of this year. The superintendent now will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the second year, twenty twenty-three bus purchase agreement, contract between the Georgia Department of Transportation and the Rockdale County Board of Education with the purchase of six buses. We are the recipient of the Atlanta Regional Commission's bus purchase for eighty percent. They pay twenty percent. This goes back to the original cost of no more than a hundred and ten thousand dollars. But as you have, I share with you over the last twenty-four months, it's been a slow process to get this thing passed by them. So they are, in this particular contract, the second one will be six hundred thousand dollars maximum. And so as you see the breakdown there for the financial impact, they'll pay four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We'll pay a hundred and twenty, that'll be the eighty-twenty split up to the hundred and ten part of the bus. And then we will pick up the difference. So the superintendent will recommend that action as, as a opportunity for us then to order buses hopefully next month. They've also gone to electronic sign format, which Dr. Oats is prepared to take care of so we can move it a lot, hopefully a lot quicker than we did last time. The next one is the DOE bus funding purchase for twenty-four, for nine, for twenty twenty-four bus purchases. The superintendent will recommend that the county, Rockdale County Board of Education approve Peach State Freightliner Thomas Bus Sales of Georgia as the vendor for the purchase of four, forty-eight passenger buses totaling five hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars. The G dot, Georgia Department of Education's regular funding allotment of eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and ten dollars per bus will be applied and then the remainder will be played with East Plus Five funding. This is a contract nine 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 nine, S P D, S W L twenty, two hundred and six thirty dash zero zero two. You see the price there of one thirty-three, four twenty-three is the lowest price. This will add HVAC buses, city capacity to our bus fleet. The units will be equipped with all of our standard equipment. And these buses will also have wheelchair lifts. And this pricing was obtained on September sixth, twenty twenty-three. The financial impact, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and forty dollars from the Georgia Department of Education and one hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars from East Plus Five. This next one is the purchase for the six buses, the first six buses we will buy with the A R C G dot money. So the superintendent will recommend that Peach State Freightliner Thomas Bus Sales of Georgia as the vendor for the purchase of six seventy-two passenger buses totaling eight hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. Georgia Department of Transportation A R C grant funding allotment of eighty-eight, six sixty-six, sixty-seven cents per bus. And East Plus Five funding will be used for the purchase. And that's the same contract number I shared with you above. These prices of these buses is one hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars per bus. These are the twenty-two, year twenty-two purchased. Last year was the first year this contract was supposed to go in place. So we'll purchase those buses, get this contract approved, assigned by them. We'll order our twenty-three buses hopefully in November and be ready to obtain those buses. Again, five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars from the A R C G dot grant. This is their eighty percent of six sixty-five, one thirty-three, the hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars from our East Plus Five, that'll be our twenty percent. And then the balance of a hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars is what we'll have to pay because of the cost of the buses. And that will be the first batch of buses we buy with this money. Yes, ma'am.
It's between, both of them say East Plus Five.
Yes. So I broke it down because the initial contract with G dot A R C was eighty, twenty percent. But they, they capped that off at a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And in this, in this case, they had a hundred thousand dollars per bus. So we had to make up the difference between that, that gap. So I split it up, we'd have a clear understanding and they would have it in our action item. Eighty percent, twenty percent would pick up the difference. If, that's what's water under the bridge. But if they had moved in time, when we first started this contract with, with the Rockdale County Transportation was in charge of it, and then they moved it over to us. But when first started, we were buying buses somewhere between ninety-four thousand, ninety-six thousand dollars. And I figured, we calculated together, we figured in three years, there's no way we'll get to a hundred and ten, but we just put a hundred and ten as the mark, thinking that would probably weigh past what we would ever purchase a bus for. Well, they've drug their feet, we're paying the difference. And I think honestly, one reason they got in gear last month when we were pushing them so hard is I asked the question, I said, are we getting the interest on all this money? And all at once, I had one of their top directors call me back and we had a meeting and all at once, the contract's signed and we're ready to roll. So it's, it's, I don't understand all the grind, but, but still eighty percent of that, that base fee is still a big plus for us. And we need new buses. And these buses, if you recall, are to improve our air quality because we're in Atlanta Regional Commission's area, containment area for, for clean air. And so the eighteen buses we take out of commission, we will have to dismantle those engines, put a hole in the engine, fill them full of sand so that, so no one can buy them and put them back in, back in service anywhere. Any other questions?
I do. I'm assuming, because I don't see it here, that these are motor fuel base buses and not EV?
They are diesel buses.
Diesel buses, okay. Do we have any EV buses at all in our fleet?
We do not currently. We have one that, through Georgia Power, that they're, they give us. We have to provide all the, the supply for, for the power for it and all the, the work to get the thing in place. It's, we're going to try it, we're going to try it. Electric buses have come a long ways. Some of our neighbors have tried the propane buses. Some have gone back to gasoline buses. I don't know that I'll ever go there because I don't see where they've made improvements for the safety of those school buses when we left them way back in the dark ages and went to diesel fuel buses. But again, these diesel buses, the air coming out of these buses is very clean. We have the, the, the process that they got to go through, the EGR systems and the P D. They're just loaded. And one time I remember they came out, put a white handkerchief on the tailpipe and, and it was, you know, just to prove how clean it was, the particles coming through that bus. So, but we're still looking, we're looking at EV. But I think maybe possibly the propane will be a first step before we go that direction, unless they fast improve them. Because electric buses, I think I shared it with you sometime back, they are very limited when you are going in pupil transportation routes. Like right now, when, when we're covering each other's routes because of manpower issues and I'm stepping to take your route and they're limited. If you keep them, put them on a city route where they're just making that little circle and come right back and charge it up, they work quite well. But there are systems, Atlanta just bought a whole bunch of them. We're all watching them closely to see how, how this works. We hope it works well for them.
Okay.
I know Fulton's one bus they tried has not worked so well. So we're, we're watching that. I like change, I like to be on the cutting edge, but I always like to see somebody else try, work the hiccups out first. Okay, my next, any other questions on bus purchases? Again, you will see, the first contract you sign was six hundred and sixty-five, this one was six hundred thousand dollars. We have a total, I talked to, to Daniel about that and said, where's, why the difference? And his financial, he didn't have the answer, I know what the answer is. But so in next, the third contract, which I'll bring to you right, first part of January, first part twenty-four, we will have the difference and we'll get all of our money lined up in that one. Okay? This next one is the Office of Operational Service Facilities Certificate of the Board of Education. Superintendent will recommend the board approve this certifying that all accounts for labor, materials, services for the Salem High School HVAC roofing. Rockdale likewise, Memorial HVAC and Roofing, Lorraine HVAC Roofing. This is part of our CMR one and two projects. All have been paid in full and there are no claims of any nature outstanding. And we, we must submit this to get our part of the Department of Education's money that will be designated towards us. Bruce's guess that many somewhere in the two hundred thousand dollar range. So we'll get this submitted and once you sign off on it and then there's the process he goes through to get us through. But this is the important to us, there will be some impact, you know, financial impact positive for us. We don't have that number tonight. And the last one I have is... Nolan, you're just trying us tonight, aren't you? Okay. This is the, the deannexation of the property of that, of that Pine Street elementary sits on that belongs in the city at this point in time, parcel ID oh five seven zero zero three zero zero five three. The alternate ID is 160074 and is identified as Northwest Sigmund Road. And so our action item is the deannexation from the City of Conyers into the unincorporated portion of Rockdale County. So the superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the resolution requesting that this parcel referred to as Northwest Sigmund Road, that portion of property at Pine Street Elementary School now located within the City of Conyers be deannexed to the unincorporated portion of Rockdale County. The rationale, there are other points, but this is the main one for us. The Pine Street Elementary School building currently sits on parcels of property in the City of Conyers and in unincorporated Rockdale. Deannexation of this parcel IDs 0507730053 from the City of Conyers to the unincorporated Rockdale County will improve law enforcement services to Pine Street Elementary School with all portions of that building being located within the same law enforcement jurisdiction. The neighboring campus of Conyers Middle School is, is in unincorporated Rockdale County and is currently served by the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office. There is no financial impact. And again, it will take away any questions when, where the line goes through that building. We did, we knew it was there when we bought it. It didn't cause us any issues. And, and to support the, the law enforcement, we do know that our, our city police and sheriff's office, if there's emergency anywhere in our county for any of our schools, they're all going to be there along with the Georgia State Patrol. But this will clear up especially smaller things and items that the right jurisdictions handling it. Those are my recommendations tonight, action items. Any questions? Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce.
Thank you, Phil. Appreciate that. And of course, we have Keith coming with our financial report.
All righty. Good evening, Madam Chair Brown, Madam Vice Chair Duncan, Dr. Rhodes, board members. I'll be going over the preliminary financial reports for the month of August. All right. The revenue for the month of, month of August is 9.5 million. The revenue year to date is 18.5 million, which is 9.3% of our budget. Last year in August, we received 9 million, 17.4 million year to date was 9.6% of our budget. Expenditure for August, 15.8 million, 32.9 million year to date was 16% of our budget. Last August, we were at 14.1 million, 29.3 million year to date, which was 15.9% of our budget. Our opening commerces at the end of August are 3,233,237. Our fund balance at the end of August is 21.9 million approximately. Last year, we were at 26.6 million approximately. Assets, 24.6 million, liabilities, 2.6 billion approximately. Those are our third party payments that will be cleared by next week. And then our fund balance at 91.21.9 million.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, Keith, Madam Chairwoman. I do just briefly in the way of superintendent's update. First, let me just commend our executive cabinet and, and by extension really commend all of our senior cabinet departments as well, as well as our teachers, of course. We're a month and a half into the school year and I do think you guys, the work that you do warrant applause. And so thank you for all you do. We do appreciate that. That's our senior and executive cabinet members and all of our departments. But our teachers, of course, we're a month and a half into the school year. And I want to commend also as part of executive cabinet H R because I know that you've been very, very busy. The work doesn't stop just because of the first day of school and you continue to do the work, making sure that we have a viable teacher in every classroom. And so of course, I'm proud here in Rockdale. When I talk to my colleagues across Metro Risa and also beyond across the state, they often marvel when I share our stats in terms of our vacancies, right? And so while we don't want any vacancies, right? We, we know that within a comparative context, we're much better off than most. And in no small part because, and you've, you've seen this, I know that our board members have seen this in the H R brief that's included within that weekly brief is that we have 33 teachers who were effective teachers, who were with us previously, who left to go to other, other districts, but who returned to us this year. And, and let me just say obviously, teachers leave for different reasons. And in some of those instances, we happen to know that, that more pay was one of the reasons, but notwithstanding that, they've returned to us. And I think I won't go into a lot of details, but I think it doesn't take a lot of inferencing to kind of figure out what that's, what's that's about. And of course, we have exit interviews built into our process now. We can't compel staff who choose to leave us to sit for an exit interview. There's no way we can do that constitutionally, right? But we do make sure that they know that an exit interview is an option to them. But what I've said to Kim is that particularly for these teachers returning, while we can infer, I do want us to give them an opportunity by way of a reentry interview, if you will, to share with us their feedback about why they're returning to us. And 33 is a significant number of teachers. So we're very proud of that. But also because of our personnel innovations like Elevate K-12 and Entourage, you know, we don't have the luxury in 2023 to not leverage all of the personnel innovations that are out there that will enable us to ensure a highly qualified, duly credentialed and certified teacher in every classroom. And more importantly, we surveyed our students who were, say, for example, in those settings to get their feedback. And we also, you'll remember Denise Richardson and I believe Michelle Stevens co-presented, who also looked at data like grades in those classes like Elevate K-12 and the non-Elevate K-12 settings. And those Elevate K-12 students did as well or better. And, and that's what we would want, right? We wouldn't want the service delivery model to dictate the outcomes for students in a negative way. So kudos and commendations to all of our team for the work that you're doing and our teachers. For sure, you heard those stats earlier about the number of first year teachers and, and of course, in terms of, as a function of all of our teachers district wide. We have just completed our Board of Education, our governance team, including myself, we've completed our day and a half board retreat that we had at the monastery. It, I have pushed out in a survey to our board and, and our governance team to provide feedback on that experience. But I can tell you, it was very informative. I want to commend all of our staff who were part of that agenda. Darcie Gilreath talked about youth mental health first aid, which was very impactful. She's very passionate about that topic. But also our student support services team led by Dr. Zelvyn Smith Dixon, our birthday lady, actually did an excellent job of presenting on the framework, the student support services framework that undergirds our work from that department. And then of course, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the G S B A senior specialist, Dr. Donna Hinton, who provided the G S B A whole governance training on governance team roles and responsibilities. And there was a lot of rich information and growth and professional learning came out of that for our board. So I just wanted to update you there accordingly. Do want to share that I shared with the board in an email that I sent earlier this afternoon after getting back from the monastery, that the Soaring Heights is a, is a project, a multi-year project that, that many, it's been a joint public-private effort to bring affordable housing to Rockdale County for key demographics, developmentally delayed adults, first responders, teachers. And Katie Barksdale serves as the head of that effort, but also Darlene Hotchkiss and, and Jeff Beach are also serving very important leadership roles. And they pulled in Mayor Evans, Chairman Nesbitt and myself, three and a half, four years ago, as they began working over this process because they wanted to be able to show the potential benefactors who would be potentially donating, that this was a whole of government, a unified intergovernmental piece in support of this. And so it's coming to fruition. So kudos to all of those and that have made that possible. There is a groundbreaking tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. And the email that I sent to the board early this afternoon has the, the address in which there will be a formal groundbreaking. And so I understand the hectic and busy schedules, but if your schedule permits, please review that invitation that I emailed to you from Darlene Hotchkiss and Katie Zaradnik. And if you are able to come, we would certainly love for you to be there. But this is great for our community. It puts, it sets us apart because there's only a handful in the country. And so that's a great thing for Rockdale County, but more importantly, it's great for the intended beneficiaries in intellectually developmentally delayed adults, first responders, teachers. And that's very timely at a time when housing is very, is expensive, right? So Madam Chairwoman and Board, thank you for your indulgence. That's all I have in the way of superintendent's update.
Thank you, Dr. Rhodes. All right. The cabinet has provided numerous presentations under the information section. And I want to encourage the board to please review that information at your leisure. Is there a need for recess? No? Okay. Well, we'll move right on. Please review the August 2023 board minutes and provide any edits to Ingrid. We will vote on those minutes in the regular section, session. There is no old business and there is no new business. Okay.
I second that motion.
All right. A motion has been made to vote on the consider agenda items one through six. Is that correct? All right. By Ms. North and second by Ms. Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. All right. There is no board discussion. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session? Motion has been made by Ms. Duncan to go into executive session and second by Ms. Jones? All right. All in favor? Motion carries. 721.
It is now eight forty-five. We are back from executive session. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second, Akil Palmer.
Motion has been made to adjourn meeting by Ms. North, second by Ms. Palmer. All in favor? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.